Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. My name is Dan Garodnik. I am the Chair of the City Planning Commission. Today's date is July 11th, 2022. If this is your first time with us, today is a public review session of the City Planning Commission, where the staff of the Department of City Planning briefs commissioners on applications that are either about to begin the city's land use process, which we refer to as ULP, or will have a public hearing this Wednesday. Before we do any of that, though, I wanted to extend a very warm welcome to our newest member, Commissioner Leila Bozorg, who was recently appointed by Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine. Welcome, Leila. We're so glad to have you. A longtime government alum with senior roles at both HPD and HUD. We know that your experience and perspective are going to be a great addition to the City Planning Commission, and we're really, really looking forward to working with you. So, welcome, Leila.
Thank you. Looking forward to it as well. Happy to be here.
Terrific. And today, we're going to be hearing about a few plans for developments of affordable homes in Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. We're going to be starting with a proposal in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, for a six-story building with about a dozen homes, a quarter of them affordable, located near Taffey Playground, and also near several G train subway stops. Also, as you all know, tackling our affordable housing crisis is a team effort from city-state and federal governments, and we're pleased today to be hearing about a plan from the Empire State Development Corporation to transform a SUNY parking garage into an apartment building with about 330 affordable homes for low-risk families, I'm sorry, for low-income families, including those who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. This one is known as the Clarkson GPP. It's located in Prospect-Lefferts Gardens, Brooklyn. The project includes amenities for residents, including daycare, adult education, workforce training, Violence Prevention Center, a basketball court, and more. And the Department of City Planning is also today going to provide some additional information as a follow-up to our hearing about the Halitz North proposal, which was, as you will recall, on the Peninsula will create, as proposed, 1,400 homes, 350 affordable, and an acre of public waterfront green space in Astoria, Queens. So, with that, let's get the show on the road. Ryan, do you want to kick us off and introduce this first item?
Certainly. So, the first item on our agenda, before we begin, I'll also note that a quorum is present. So, the first item on our agenda is a certification, the zoning map, zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 2. And our presenter is Jesse Hirakawa. Jesse?
Hello, commissioners. I actually know, Ryan, it's actually Community District 3, but just for clarity. Awesome. Good afternoon. Thank you, commissioners. Next slide. This is an application for a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate a new six-story multifamily residential building with approximately 11,373 square feet, at 3.49 FAR, with 11 dwelling units, three of which would be affordable, and were located in the northwest area Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 3. Next slide. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from an M-1-1 district to an M-1-4 R-6-A MX-4 district, and a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Next slide. As said earlier, the project area is in the northwest area of Bedford-Stuyvesant, between the Williamsburg and Fort Greene area. Next slide. The area surrounding the project area is characterized by a variety of uses, from industrial manufacturing, as you can see in the purple, commercial in the shades of red, residential in the shades of yellow and orange, and community facility and cultural institutions in the blue. The project area is mapped within an M-1-1 manufacturing district. The M-1-1 district allows for a variety of light manufacturing uses, such as repair shops, wholesale services, and storage facilities. Directly to the east of the project area is the border of the M-1-2 R-6-A MX-4 district, also known as the Special Mixed Use District, which was created by the department in 2001 with the Flushing-Bedford rezoning, mainly to permit mixed manufacturing and residential uses in an area to accommodate the growing need for housing while preserving industrial and commercial uses within a mixed-use district. Next slide. The area has several building typologies, including two to three stories of industrial warehouses and lots, also having vacant and parking lots. There are several educational and cultural institutions in the area. And lastly, also has four-to-six-story multifamily buildings. Some of them have commercial ground floor uses, such as along Park Avenue. Approximately 12 blocks to the west and two to the north of the project area is the Brooklyn Navy Yards. Additionally, a few blocks south of that area is Pratt Institute. Further down in the bottom left of this image, you can see the Taffey Playground, that has passive and active recreational uses. The project area is located within a transit zone. All that has, within five stops of the G train, all located within one mile of the project area, you can see to the right and bottom of your screen. And there are several buses that all run within the surrounding area. Additionally, there's a city bike station on the same block to the south of the project area, for which also a bike lane runs along Franklin Avenue. Lastly, three blocks to the west, there's an entrance to the Brooklyn-Queens Expressway, the BQE. Next slide. Looking at the two applicant-owned lots, the development site is lots 37 and 38, highlighted in the blue there. It comprises of approximately 3,250 square feet of surface area and a 40-foot street wall frontage along Park Avenue. Both of these lots, lot 37 and 38, are currently vacant. Lot 35 is improved with a legal, non-conforming, three-story multifamily residential building. And also lot 7501 is improved with a six-story multifamily residential building, approximately 13,000 square feet. This was actually built in 2006 pursuant to a BSA variance. Next slide. This is a view across the street to the east, across Franklin Avenue to the east, along Park Avenue, and looking south at lot 29, which is improved with two buildings, including a legal, non-conforming, four-story mixed-use residential and commercial building with several dwelling units and a ground-floor coffee shop. And there's also, you can see, a one-story fish market. Next slide. Moving north along Franklin Avenue and looking to the east, this is block 1899, lots 26, 27, 28, and 30, which is on the side, are all improved with a legal, non-conforming, three-story two-family residential buildings, which were all built in the early 1900s. Next slide. The proposed developments will be a new six-story multifamily residential building with approximately 11,373 square feet, 3.49 FAR, a floor area with 11 dwelling units. The proposed development will rise to a height of 80 feet and have a base height of 65 feet, with a 15-foot setback after the fifth floor. Next slide. The proposed actions consist of a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M-1-1 district to an M-1-4 R-6-A MX-4 district. The proposed district would be mapped at an 80-foot depth south of Park Avenue, which aligns with a lot depth. And then 105 and 100-feet depths from Franklin Avenue to the west and the east, respectively. Next slide. The MX district boundaries are essentially being extended to the west, while switching the manufacturing district to an M-1-4. Next slide. The proposed extension of the mixed-use district will permit manufacturing, residential, and commercial uses in the mixed-use district with a variety of different FARs. The residential will have a maximum of 3.6 FAR. Commercial and industrial uses will have a maximum of 2 FAR. And community facilities will have a maximum of 3 FAR. Buildings are required to have base heights between 40 and 75 feet, followed by a required setback with a maximum building height of 85 feet. Off-street parking is required for 50% of the dwelling units, while income-restricted units are exempt. Next slide. The last action proposed is a zoning text amendment to amend Appendix F to designate the project area as an MIH area with option 1, where 25% of the units must be set aside for affordable housing at an average of 60% AMI. Also, option 2, where 30% of the units must be set aside for affordable housing at an average of 80% AMI. The applicant is proposing three MIH units to comply with both options. I'd also note that the applicant is proposing to map MIH across the project area. And while the proposed development contains less than 12,500 square feet of residential floor area, which is one of the thresholds at which MIH requirements are triggered, the applicant has indicated their intent to build 11 units, which would trigger the MIH requirements and allow them to build at their full permitted FAR and height for an MIH development. Next slide. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, effective June 2022, this application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity, because it would increase the permitted residential floor area of the area by at least 50,000 square feet. The applicant has stated that the proposal would produce new income-restricted housing units in a location that has low income and is highly accessible to transit and jobs. Next slide. And that completes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you very much, Jesse. And I think I have the picture here. I really just had only had one question for you. You noted that lot 35 here, which is within the project area, is legal, non-conforming. I want to know if you could just say a little bit more about it and what the impact would be for including it as part of the MX-4 here. Would that bring it into conformity?
Yes, actually, thank you, Nicky Chair Garodnik. That's actually exactly it for the second part of your question. By extending the MX district boundary, several of the residential buildings that are legal, non-conforming, they will be put into compliance, since they are residential uses that were previously in a M-1-1 manufacturing district. So, they will be brought into conformance with the R-6-A, since it better matches those building forms. To your first question, the reason why they were legal, non-conforming was, for instance, backing up in history, I think around, I hope I could be right, 1961 now, with the zoning resolution. We had mapped manufacturing districts there, but there were existing residential buildings there. And so, since we had mapped manufacturing over it, they exist still, and so those residential uses have been there before the zoning resolution. So, that's why we call them legal, non-conforming.
Great.
I hope I did that answer justice.
It does. It answers the question. Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Goodrich. We'll see who else.
My question is just about the racial equity portion. I heard, what I heard was just a reiteration of the income restrictions. Is that, is that it, or is there's more?
Yeah, Commissioner Goodrich, I'm sorry, maybe I don't understand the question. I'm sorry.
The part of your presentation about the racial equity portion, I just saw a slide about income. Was that all for the racial equity portion from the developer, or is there more?
I believe there is a thorough, a larger thorough report of the racial equity report. This was just a slide that we are presenting on this half, but we can get that full report to you, if you'd like to review that.
The report was in your, in your package?
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
It's in the package, and you know, I would add that the slide we shared, which, you know, we're still figuring out what's best to share on this slide, also included the map that showed the displacement index, which was, you know, this was, I think, a higher displacement index area. So, you know, that's part of the, I think, the discussion here.
Is displacement based on race, or displacement just displacement?
So, the displacement index is based on a number of factors, and I believe that race is one of those factors in terms of the composition of the community district that it is in. And there's also things like the change in sort of rent over time, and the, and other factors are sort of weighed in that, in that index.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me go next to Commissioner Goodrich. Did you have other questions? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
No, that's it for now.
Okay, you got it. All right. Commissioner Bernie?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jesse. Were there any additional floor plans in the package that we received? I'm just, I was trying to figure out, because it looked as though there's a gap between the proposed building and the building to the left. It looks as though they've kind of taken a chunk out of the building to the right, and I'm just trying to figure out how how it fitted into the site, and also I was curious about the ground floor plan and how it meets the street. But I didn't see any floor plans in the package. I wonder if they might be there, or if they might be coming.
Sure, I can, I can double-check what was included, but I believe I added those drawings, but I can see if we can provide the floor plan drawings for you.
Okay, I may just have missed them. I can go back and check. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's see if there are any other questions. Yes, Commissioner Rampershead?
Yes, thank you. And just to chime in on Commissioner Bernie's comments, I did see some plans in there, but I was just wondering what sustainable measures are being taken for this building, and will the roof be accessible to all the tenants? Because I know they, he does have partial plans in here, but it doesn't reflect anything that's happening at the roof, and I was just curious.
Yeah, in terms of the sustainability and access to the roof.
Green roof, yeah, green roof, solar panels. I'm just curious, what else, what are they proposing for the building?
Sure, sure. There wasn't actual any direct proposal about having, you know, making that roof accessible to all of them, but I can ask the applicant and have them address that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Vice Chairman, Vice Chair Knuckles?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to point out to my colleagues that on page 21 of the presentation, there is a, there are two floor plans, one ground floor, and then for floors, two through five, and then additional one for the sixth floor.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I do not see other questions on this item. So, Jesse, thank you. Forty-four, I'm sorry, 446-448 Park Avenue in Brooklyn is certified. We'll look forward to seeing you and this project again during the process, so thank you for your presentation today. Let's go on to the next item, Ryan, which I believe is also in Brooklyn.
Yes, the second item on our agenda is a review of a general project plan approval in Brooklyn Community District 9, and our presenter is San Martinak.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is New York State Urban Development Corporation's Empire State Development is adopting a general project plan for the proposed Clarkson Avenue mixed-use project. This is a land use improvement and residential project that EST is sponsoring pursuant to the New York State's UDC Act. Next, please. EST is requesting a letter of approval for the zoning override for its general project plan and design guidelines. EST needs a zoning override. And regarding the CPC per view, CPC is being asked to support the zoning override. The CPC can provide comments in its letter to the EST on its feedback to the proposed project. The project is located in Community District 9 in Brooklyn. Next, please. To give a background about vital Brooklyn, the proposed project is part of the state of New York's initiative of Comprehensive Community Development Program that addresses so, social, economic, and health disparities in central Brooklyn, which is one of the most underserved areas in Brooklyn. Next, please. In July 2020, the development team selected Canba Housing Ventures as the conditionally designated developer for the proposed project. Next, please. This provides the context. The project site is shown in yellow. It's located along Clarkson Avenue within Community District 9. The areas shaded in purple belong to Kings County Hospital and SUNY Downstate Medical Center and its affiliates. The areas in blue are public schools, and the area in beach just to the northeast of development site is Department of Sanitation's parking garage. This site is one of several sites in central Brooklyn for which a RFP was issued back in 2018. And the commission might recall, back in April, another one of these projects called Utica Avenue had, was reviewed. It's located approximately six long blocks to the east of the project site, also in Community District 9. Next, please. The project site is bounded by 80-foot-wide Nostrian Avenue to the west, 60-foot-wide Parkside Avenue to the north, 80-foot-wide New York Avenue to the east, and 60-foot-wide Clarkson Avenue to the south. It lies within M-1-1 district, which is surrounded by residential zoning districts to the northeast and south. M-1-1 district is a low-density manufacturing district, which permits industrial and commercial users to an FAR of one. And buildings are generally required to be 30 feet or two stories along the street wall, after which they are governed by the sky exposure plane. The proposed uses and bulk are not permitted under the existing M-1-1 zoning. The land uses include a mix of residential, commercial, community facility, parking, and utility uses. There are several mixed-use buildings along Nostrian Avenue. Immediately to the north of the project site in blue is a SUNY Downstate Biotechnology Incubator. To the west, in red, is a retail building. To the east is a gas station in pink and a playground in green at the lower corner along Parkside Avenue. And across to the northeast from Parkside Avenue is the sanitation parking garage. The area is located within transit zone and is very well served by public transit. The 2 and 5 subways have stopped along Winthrop Street, just a block to the north along Nostrian, and the site is served by a couple of bus lines, including an SBS, which runs along Nostrian Avenue. Next, please. The project site is comprised of an irregularly shaped lot, approximately 54,000 square feet. It's currently improved with a one-story parking garage with 172 spaces, which are available to SUNY Downstate staff and students. Next, please. This is a 100% affordable housing project that will cater to low-income families and individuals, as well as families experiencing or at risk of homelessness, with a focus on promoting health and well-being of its residents. The proposed project would be a nine-story, approximately 345,000 square feet mixed-use complex, would include 298,000 square feet of residential, 32,000 square feet of community facility uses, and include a parking garage in the cellar, which would be a public parking garage. There would be 328 affordable housing units, approximately half of which would be permanently supportive housing. So, to, the 50% supportive housing would include formerly incarcerated individuals, youth aging out of foster care, and homeless young adults, including homeless families. The other 50% would be part of the HCR lottery and would be available to at 10 to 30% of AMI. Clarkson Avenue has the entrance to the residential, which is shown to the left in yellow, and to the right in green is the entrance to the community hub. This is located adjacent to the park, and the outdoor areas for the project are located adjacent to the park is part of the design for this. The proposed project is unlisted pursuant to State Environmental Review and has no significant adverse impacts. Next, please. The street-side view of entrance to the community hub mentioned earlier, the outdoor, this image shows the outdoor areas and a portion of the park to the right side. Next, please. This image shows the view from Parkside Avenue looking south, and it shows the landscaped outdoor areas, including the rear yard and on the roof. Along Parkside Avenue to the left, the arrow in gray shows the access to the parking garage, which is located closer to the sanitation public garage. And to the right, the arrow in blue is to the entrance to a community facility use. Next, please. As mentioned earlier, the existing M-1-1 zoning does not allow the proposed uses, the height and bulk. And in order to implement the proposed project, EST would need to override the zoning. Next, please. These diagrams show the zoning envelope as part of design guidelines, and the design guidelines regulate the bulk of the proposed development. They also include various components, including signage, street yards, open space. And Department of City Planning has had several conversations with applicant team and EST and provided our feedback to the overall proposal as well as design guidelines. Next, please. EST and the development team have been very responsive to DCP feedback, and that has resulted in an enhanced quality of development. And DCP has also provided additional recommendations on the draft design guidelines. And EST has conveyed to us that they will be incorporated in the final GPP language. Next, please. In summary, this is a general project plan by EST to facilitate the redevelopment of a parking facility in Brooklyn. This would allow a nine-story new mixed-use complex with 100% affordable housing, as well as community facility uses. DCP is supportive of the proposal, and as a part of EST's process, DCP is required to present the project to CPC, and CPC is being asked for an approval letter in support of the zoning override. The draft approval letter has been submitted to the commission, and this concludes the presentation, and happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me, let me start off, just a couple. What, and I, I believe that I know the answer to this question, but for the benefit of the commission and anybody watching, the reason why this property is in the realm of GPP as opposed to anything else is because there is state ownership or SUNY ownership of this site. Is that right? Can you describe that a little bit?
Sure. The project site is currently owned in fee by the Health Science Center at Brooklyn Foundation, which is an affiliate of SUNY Downstate Medical Center, and that is the basis for this proposed project.
And, and the developer here, Canba Housing Ventures, they were selected through an RFP process with the state?
That's right.
And you cited that in the presentation, that 50% of the units were supportive housing. The other 50% The other fifty percent, um, I believe are affordable of other variety, but not supportive. Is that?
Right, right. That's right. So overall, this is a, all the units are affordable housing. It's a hundred percent affordable housing project. Within that fifty percent is dedicated for permanently supportive or formerly homeless units, which I described in detail what those categories are. And the rest would be affordable at ten to thirty, thirty percent of the A M I.
Great. And then the last question I have is, as it relates to the letter, I'm really pleased that, uh, the applicant took the agency suggestion, our agency suggestion on design improvements on building wall articulation and the outer courts and sidewalks and tree planting alike. The letter does not reference the specific changes that they are making. It is just an approval based on what we expect that they will make. Do you think that we need to lay out those changes in detail in the draft letter or or not? And if not, can you just say why not?
Right. So we, in this case, uh, you may recall in the previous Utica mixed-use project, we had outlined specifically two recommendations or slash concerns, because they were major and they were not able to be addressed because of certain logistical and programmatic issues. But we did want to note it for the record. In this case, applicant has been responsive. All the recommendations have been incorporated. And these are the few more like a technical-oriented, uh, detailed recommending, uh, comments on the design, draft design guidelines, and we are told that they are already incorporating it. So we did not include it, uh, because they were minor. They were not major comments or concerns.
Okay. And therefore you don't believe they need to be delineated in the letter specifically?
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right. Making her first appearance here at the City Planning Commission, let me go to Commissioner Bozarg.
Hey, um, I am curious if we have a sense yet of the fifty percent of the units that are not supportive, what the general bedroom mix is of those units? Is it, you mentioned affordable to families, so is that more than studios? Or do we have a general sense yet?
Yeah, so there are hundred and nineteen studios, hundred and fifteen one-bedroom apartments, sixty-seven two-bedroom, and twenty-seven three-bedroom apartments.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine?
Thank you. So, um, San Martin, thank you for the presentation. I have, but two questions. One was that, one partially was asked by Commissioner Bozarg, so thank you. And the other, I'll, I'll go to the park first. So the, the actual park that's existing there now, how is that park operated? And how will that park be operated, if at all, in conjunction with the open space that is now planned for the park, for the entry to the building? Um, that's one question. And then my second question would be is, um, the two cohorts that are being planned for the residences. So you have a homeless population and you have, you know, um, an affordable population. How are the, how are the selections being made for those two populations?
I don't have the, I can check regarding the second question. And also, the first question, did you mean whether the open space, which is part of the proposed, uh, project, is that open and accessible to the community? Or is its relation with the adjacent, uh, park?
No, specifically how the open space that's dedicated to the building, adjacent to the park, how will those two interact and interface? Is the park expected to be closed at night? Is there going to be an entrance from the building side into the park? What is, what are the plans for inclusion of the park, if any, with, uh, to, 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 to relationship to the building?
I am not, uh, again, hundred percent sure, so I would like to hold on this, uh, question also along with the other one and get back to you.
That's fine, San Martin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me see if there are other questions here. Okay, well, uh, the questions that were raised, uh, you know, we do have a, an approval letter here for consideration. Um, I guess I would like to ask, uh, for those who are uh, waiting for additional detail, uh, from staff of City Planning, whether those questions are, arise to a, a place where you'd like us to hold off on, uh, asking for a sense. By a voice vote here to send this letter of approval, uh, we can wait, but, you know, if the questions, you know, are, are such that it would not impact your ultimate vote here, Commissioner Marine, and I guess I'm asking, uh, you specifically in that last question you asked, um, you know, just to give me, give me a sense as to, you know, whether you'd like to wait for, uh, for, for answers here.
You're, you're muted, Commissioner.
Commissioner Marine, you there? Okay. I, I also will open the, quite open this point up to anybody to see if there's any, uh, any feelings about holding off at this, this stage of the game. Yeah, this is a, a project which, uh, the, the department certainly feels is ready to go, but, um, also we have the ability to wait. Go ahead, Ryan.
If I may, uh, we, we are, we know we're going to have a review, a special review session on Wednesday to, uh, to handle a city council modification. If between now and Wednesday, uh, we could get the answer, uh, to Commissioner Marine's question, we could add this to that agenda for Wednesday and, um, not hold it up for another two weeks, but sort of still give ourselves a, a chance to answer this question.
That, that would be great. So let, let us do that. Uh, we'll, we'll hold for the moment on this one. I've got a couple of tiny, tiny, uh, tweaks to the letter, uh, which we'll give to you as well, small stuff. But, um, but, uh, okay, we will do that. We will revisit it, the special review session on Wednesday. So we will hold off on, uh, taking any votes, uh, for, for the moment. Uh, and let me just see before we, uh, close here, if there's anybody who has any other questions or thoughts, otherwise we'll pick it back up on Wednesday. Okay, seeing none. Ryan, while we've got you right here in our screens, why don't you, about the next one?
We will, uh, go to the third item on our agenda, which is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendments uh, in Brooklyn Community District eleven, and San Martin will present this one as well.
Good afternoon again. Uh, this is a private application by Jackson Group for zoning map change and a zoning text amendment to facilitate development of a eight-story mixed-use building with residential, commercial, and community facility uses. It contains sixty-six dwelling units, including twenty-two M I H. Next, please. The project area is located in southeastern portion in C D eleven in Gravesend neighborhood in Brooklyn. Next, please. The project area outlined in black is at the intersection of Avenue S and McDonald Avenue. And the development site outlined in red is located on the portion to the north of Avenue S. McDonald Avenue is a hundred-foot-wide major north-south thoroughfare, containing a mix of commercial, community facility, automotive, users, and mixed-use buildings. And the F train is elevated along McDonald Avenue. And the Kings Highway subway station is located directly across from the project area to the east. Next, please. The western portion of project area is mapped within N R five B district, and the eastern portion is within an M11 district. Next, please. The project area outlined in yellow consists of four tax lots. The development site, which is outlined in white, includes two applicant-owned lots. The Lot Thirty-nine is vacant, and Lot Forty-two contains a one-story building, which is temporarily located, occupied with a community facility use, which would, which is in the process of relocating. Next, please. This provides the overview of proposed development would be an eight-story mixed-use building with one-twenty thousand square feet of floor area, would include hundred thousand residential with sixty-six dwelling units, including twenty-two M I H units pursuant to option two. Also nineteen thousand square feet of commercial space and four thousand square feet of community facility use intended to be a daycare. Next, please. The ground floor plan showing the location of community facility use along Lake Street and the commercial space on the remainder of the ground floor fronting all streets. Next, please. A rendering of the proposed development looking north from the intersection of Avenue S and McDonald Avenue. The building will be set back five feet from McDonald Avenue pursuant to the proposed C four-four L zoning. Next, please. In order to facilitate the proposed development, applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change from an M11 and, and R five B district to a C four-four L district. The C four-four L district was created for commercial corridors along elevated train lines such as this location. C four-four L is a contextual regional commercial district that allows mixed-use buildings at a residential zoning equivalent of R seventy and permits residential, community facility, and commercial uses. It also requires a five-foot setback facing the elevated train lines. Next, please. Applicant is also seeking a zoning text amendment to create a new M I H area with options one and two. And just would like to note here that during certification applicant had proposed to map option one, uh, during, uh, recent, uh, more recently, applicant has changed to option two. So it changed from sixteen units to twenty-two. Because applicant had mapped proposed both option one and two, this would not pose any issues for the proposed development. Next, please. Community Board eleven held a public hearing in May and voted unanimously to approve the application. Borough President has held a public hearing on June fourteen, and we are expecting to receive the recommendation today. This concludes the presentation. During the certification, there were a few questions asked by the commission, and I would like to respond to those. One was a question regarding the bedroom mix. So the answer to that is there'll be three one-bedroom, thirty-three two-bedrooms, and thirty-three-bedroom apartments. There was a question regarding the gap between the proposed sixty-six units and, uh, the, those, the number of units which was analyzed in the reasonable worst case development scenario, which is one-twenty-six. My understanding is that the proposed unit count is lower, primarily because the average unit size in the proposed development is approximately fifty percent larger than the dwelling unit factor used in environmental review. There were also questions regarding noise mitigation and the queuing of vehicles. An applicant is planning to respond to those questions at the public hearing. I believe that addresses or responds to the questions, and happy to take any further questions.
Great. Thank you. Just, uh, just remind us, um, one technical point here. There were four lots that are included in the project area. One of them has a little piece that is outside of the project area. Can you just remind us why it is that a piece of this is, one of those lots is sliced out?
Uh, the, a, a very small portion of, uh, Lot Thirty-nine is just outside. It's less than, um, two. I think it's less than two thousand square feet, and, uh, it, it's outside the proposed area, was not included in the rezoning because it's less than twenty-five feet away from the district boundary and is subject to majority zoning anyways. Uh, so just in, in, I believe, as a rational boundary mapping exercise, that was not included because it would not have impact on the proposed development.
Okay, um, all right. Let me go to the Vice Chairman, Mr. Knuckles.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, San Martin, thank you for the presentation. Regarding the applicant's, uh, choice of option two, which I believe has a, uh, an average of eighty percent A M I of the, of this, of the citywide A M I. Do you know the A M I for the community board in which this, uh, project would be located?
This, uh, it is, uh, around forty-six thou- fifty-six thousand. The, the median household income in this community district.
So that's, I think that's lower than the eighty percent A M I, is it not? Or is it?
San Martin, do, if we can, we can.
Well, yeah, if you can get that information.
Yeah, I was, sorry, I was trying to look it up if I had.
Yeah, we can get that answer for you, uh, for post-hearing. Or maybe, or maybe the applicant could actually answer that as well.
Yeah, okay. That's my question. Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that, the applicant, we're, we're going to have this one for a public hearing on Wednesday, so, we, either we will be or they will be prepared, uh, to answer that one. Did, did you have o- other questions? That, that was it. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. I noted the community board's unanimous, uh, vote. Was that, was the increase in unit sizes based on deliberations with the community board?
I, I believe that the larger unit sizes was always part of the, of the proposed, uh, project in response to the community, uh, general, the area demands. However, to, to a point regarding unanimous vote for this C D eleven, Community Board eleven, it's, it's partly because applicant has been very responsive to community board's recommendations. This project has been around for five to six years of, it has been on hold of hold. And applicant team has received community board recommendations and responded to all of them. So that's why, uh, there is full support for this project.
Great. And if the applicant could speak to on Wednesday, the expiration of the four-twenty-one A benefits, if that will impact their project timeline, I'd like to hear from them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernie?
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, um, with the F train running right beside the building, what the rationale is for parking, off-street parking? And, and what's the department's position on this? Because there are lots of arguments for not allowing parking in transit areas. Um, and I'm just wondering what, uh, what is the department's position?
In, in this case, and again, my colleagues can join me on this, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, parking is being pursued as part of the zoning. It's allowed and the, the, especially with the larger unit size and the intended demographic expected for this proposed development, there is a demand for parking. So I believe that's the reason.
Well, there, there's always a demand, but it's a demand that we're trying to suppress, right?
Right, and, and I.
Ban parking.
That's, that's right, Commissioner. And, and I, I would say broadly, we would try and, and work with applicants to reduce the amount of parking that's proximate to, um, immediately adjacent to, uh, public transit. The, the proposed parking is, is a combination of required and, and, uh, what they've negotiated is part of their discussion with the community board as well. Um, and it was one of the reasons for, uh, support, uh, for the proposal. Um, and so it's, it's, uh, a trade-off between, uh, the proposed development and, and getting support through the public review process.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Dweck.
Just to clarify, the parking is required. Am I, am I correct?
So some of it is required, but not sixty-seven units. Think about half that, fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the market rate units, correct?
Yeah. And I'm just requesting, I'm just questioning the wisdom. Yeah. And I'm just request, I'm just questioning the wisdom of requiring it all, which is obviously a broader policy question. But then I'm questioning if fifty percent is required, why are we allowing a hundred percent? So but I but I think he he answered, Alex answered the question, so not to my satisfaction, but he answered the question.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions now, obviously not the last opportunity, because of course we will have this before us again on Wednesday for our public hearing. So we will pick up twenty-eighty Mc Avenue on McDonald Avenue on Wednesday. Next, Ryan, let's go on to some modifications.
Sure. So the fourth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for the eleventh street and thirty-fourth avenue rezoning. The city council proposes to modify the text amendment to remove M I H option two, leaving option one. Staff believe that this modification is within scope.
Great questions.
Brian, I'm recused to this one. Sorry.
That's right, yes.
Commissioner, you are recused. Thank you. Okay.
Is this more affordable housing or less? I'm sorry.
So the M I H option one is twenty-five percent of the floor area at a lower A M I. And then option two is thirty percent of the floor area at a higher area meeting income, so there tend to
Okay, so this is a scope determination. And this modification for the staff of the Department of City Planning is within the scope of the environmental review, so I am going to seek assent by a voice vote here to send a letter to the city council that this proposed modification is within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, the ayes have it.
Right. The fifth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination for the Weatherall Street and sixty-seventh Avenue rezoning. And similarly, the city council here proposes to modify the text amendment to remove M I H option two, leaving option one. Staff believes that this modification is within scope.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing now, again, this is a scope determination. I'm going to seek assent by voice vote here, send a letter to the city council that this proposed modification is within scope. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, nay. Okay, we have a cent. Thank you, Ryan.
And the sixth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination. This one is for seventy-seven thirty-nine Vli Place and Matt Solomon is here to discuss. Scott?
Great, thank you, Ryan. Good afternoon, Commissioners. On June thirtieth, D C P received a modification recommended by the city council for a zoning map application approved by the commission on June eighth. Next slide. Above here, we are looking at a zoning change map as approved by the commission, which was to rezone the project area from R three to C one-two to R six A C two-three, while also reducing the depth of the overlay so to be terminus with development site only. This would have facilitated a mixed-use building containing a hundred nineteen homes, including thirty-six permanently affordable units pursuant to M I H. In addition to ground floor retail, the community facility uses. Next slide. Then above here is an updated zoning change map reflecting the modification recommended by the city council. They're recommending to modify the proposed residential zoning district from R six A to R six B, while retaining the proposed C two-three commercial overlay, including keeping the reduced depth of the overlay as approved by the C P C. The related zoning text amendment to map M I H has also not been modified. As modified, this would reduce the housing production to approximately forty-seven homes, including fourteen subject M I H. The reduction density reflects the maximum residential four area ratio being reduced from three-point-six to two-point-two and a reduction in the maximum building height from eighty-five feet to fifty-five feet. D B C, excuse me, city planning staff reviewed the proposed modification and determined that it's within scope of the application and E A S previously approved by the commission. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions here? Okay, Commissioner Bernie?
I mean, you know, just my usual comment. I mean, Scott, I don't see how you can say that this is not a change in scope since they've reduced the scope of the proposal, clearly, I mean, de facto.
So the scope of determination is based on its potential for additional impacts or changes to impact on the E A S. So the reduction in height and depth being less than R six B is is the primary factor in determining whether determining whether it is in scope. So there are changes to a tech memo. Tech memo has also been submitted reflecting changes in height. And he, the environmental consultant addressed each section and how it would be changed or unchanged. So other than shadow impacts being reduced, height impacts being reduced, density impacts and traffic being reduced. That that's the primary factor in that determination.
Oh, so I did not understand that. So this the scope determination is purely to do with the environmental impact?
Yes.
Well, it it it's also, there's a land use, there's land use scope, which is is it between the two sort of proposed, the existing zoning and the proposed zoning? So there is, there is a land use in, you know, there's no new actions that would be required for this is essentially sort of
I don't know, you know, somebody needs to take a look at the charter language where this is concerned, because it's a bit of a joke when we approve a particular project and then it just, you know, gets modified and doesn't come back. I mean, it's kind of a waste of our time, really. But anyway, that's, you know, my feelings about that.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Let's go on to Commissioner Bozard.
I think my question is related to Commissioner Bernie's, which is, and I'm I'm sorry if this was in the material, but I didn't see it. Do we have a sense of programmatically what's lost by that height reduction?
Sure. So it's essentially related to the residential output, so it's still going to be having this ground floor a programmatic side of retail, a mix of retail community facility uses as proposed by applicant. And it's essentially three floors being knocked down. And that's where the reduction in the dwelling units comes into effect. So it's the the pedestrian experience, so to speak, of the commercial, commercial, excuse me, the commercial community facilities is unchanged. The footprint of the building is unchanged. It's essentially the residential above.
And do we know how many units that represents?
So it's a drop from a hundred nineteen to forty-seven. So so it's a significant drop. It's it's reflecting the three-point-six maximum allowed inclusionary housing in R six A districts to a two-point-two maximum inclusionary housing in R six B. It's a it's a quite a gap between districts. There is no gap. There's no zoning district in between.
It seems like a large loss of housing units.
Absolutely.
You are correct, Commissioner. That is a big, that is a big hit. This is, this is a this was a, this is a big change. Mister Vice Chairman, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Scott, you attributed what might be a rationale of of low and high and shadows, but you know, has the council provided an actual rationale for for their decision?
We only received, it's only, we only received transmittal of a of a letter indicating that there is a modification and then the change itself, which is essentially the dash, the strike-throughs of the the A and replace with the B.
Yeah, well, I I I think it might you know, elucidate the process and and perhaps getting at the point of of Commissioner Bernie. If we understood, well, you know, certainly they have the power to do what they do, but if there were additional information as to the rationale for the decision, I think it would, it would help the process.
I mean, I could only speak anecdotally from the count, the 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 local council member. And and he said in the past, his concern was related to density and height, and that's how this resulted. I think, I think that's primarily what it leads from.
Yeah, no, my point is just institutionally, I think it would help the process if in these modifications, the land use division in the council would, you know, set forth what the rationale is for it. It would edify, at least for me, you know, what the thinking is around these things, you know, going forward.
And if density and height is not a land use issue, then I don't know what is.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me jump in for a second and and say that, you know, obviously, I think we all probably share the frustration with the reduction of this number of units. And questions of charter change, et cetera, like we, the council presumably will will explain itself or the council member will explain himself when he votes on this item when it comes back to them. And, you know, this is a, this is a disappointment, disappointing outcome here. But also, we did hear the rationale. We obviously all sat through a public hearing, and most of us did a public hearing where we heard the rationale of the community, which presumably the council member is doing his best to follow. So while we may not agree with it, this is one that we are now in a, in a position of evaluating it as a matter of land use and environmental scope determination. So with that in mind, I am going to see if there are other questions about that. Commissioner Edie?
Thank you, Chair. Given the conversation, and I I think we may have done this in the past and only if you feel it's appropriate, whether or not there's the means in our determination that it's within scope to at least acknowledge the fact that we believe that the higher density was warranted from a land use perspective and whether or not some comment along those lines would be appropriate.
I'm certainly open to that. Ryan, guide us a little as to what we have done in the past in similar instances.
I mean, typically, typically, we try to keep our our scope determination, determination letters just clean scope determination. It's 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 within scope, it's not. I will also add two things to this conversation, and one is related to Commissioner Edie's comment, is that we sent over a a report that, as I recall, saying the praises of the commission's decision. And and we, I think that we stand by that report still. And then I will also add that the the existing zoning is an R three-two, which I believe if I remembering correctly, has a maximum F A R of point six and would probably result in in a units. Let's see, doing a little math, it's it's far fewer units. I'm gonna guess twenty units would probably be very ambitious for for an as-of-right development here. So, you know, while while we may be, you know, the commission may be disappointed with the with the outcome here, there you know, the these are, these are, you know, conversations, I think, that we have with city council. And and, you know, I'm sure the Queen's Office had had conversations with the council member directly about about this project, and we will continue to sort of have these density conversations as we go forward. But I I think that we try to keep our scope determination letters sort of clean as a matter of practice.
Ryan, I I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. I think, you know, our report, as you point out, clearly defends what we think is the right decision, so I'm fine with that. Thank you very much, Bow.
Also, Commissioner, I think it's important for us to continue to make the point here that the city planning commission is making best efforts to try to address the fact that we are in a housing crisis in New York City. And, you know, rhetoric aside, that comes from a variety of corners of the city. It's really important when the moment of truth happens that we step up and actually get them done here. So I I I feel the frustration of this commission. It's with good cause. And we will continue to make this point and to to encourage our colleagues and, you know, on all corners of government here to do what they need to do to deliver units and to help ameliorate this crisis. So I think your your point is very well taken. Actually, all of them are. Okay, Commissioner Rampershead.
Oh, yeah, I agree with a lot of the comments that were raised. This is a big reduction in in dwelling units. I'm just curious, has there been any conversation with the applicant team whether or not they're going to go forward with this project? Maybe if the Queen's Office had a conversation with them or not, I was just curious.
I think on the applicant on public, during some sessions of public record, both at the community board meetings and at the C P C said, while not ideal, they would still pursue this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. All right. With that in mind, and with all disappointment noted for the record here, let me just remind people, we're doing scope determinations only, and I would like to seek assent by voice vote to send a letter to the council that the proposed modifications are in fact within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Aye, it's Leah.
Can I abstain since I was not at the hearing?
You can.
Okay.
Yes. So one abstention, one no, we've got you.
Yep.
Okay. Let us move on. That motion carried. Let's go on to the upcoming votes for Wednesday, Ryan.
Uh, yeah, certainly. Let me just, Jeff, I'm going to share my screen. Don't become alarmed. All right. So we have future votes on Wednesday, March second. Or whoops, well, that's not, that's not correct. On Wednesday, July thirteenth, staff prepared the reports for the following. For eighteen ten Randall Avenue, staff are recommending approval of the zoning map and zoning text amendment. The actions will permit an eight-story building with about a hundred and sixty-seven units of housing and a house of worship in the Soundview neighborhood of Community District Nine in the Bronx. Randall Avenue is a wide street, and the proposed development is consistent with a surrounding mid-density development. And then for nineteen fifty-nine Strang Avenue, staff is recommending approval of this zoning map amendment. The addition of a commercial overlay to this site will allow retail development on a site that has historic or history of a history of commercial uses in an area where it is appropriate. Moving on, we have the Court of Administrative. This is a, and one Willoughby Square, a, an office space lease. I'll just do all of these together so people can see them. The Queen's D A office space lease, Cube Gardens Road and the Law Department office space lease at sixteen or one sixty-two ten Jamaica Avenue. Staff is recommending approval of all three of these office spaces, office space leases. It's a much-needed office space for various agencies and courts and in our areas that are appropriate for them. And I'm going to end my sharing my screen. And I will then call, ask if there's any questions on those, on those recommendations. I don't see any raised hands. All right. And two thirty-one oh-six Northern Boulevard commercial overlay is our next future vote, and Scott is back to discuss this one as well. Scott?
Great, thank you, Ryan, Commissioners. So while Jeff's pulling up the slide. Just give him a second there. And and it's a, it's a one-slide presentation, so I'll start speaking while he's prepared for bringing that up. So the Department, so Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal to amend the zoning map to facilitate the applicant's proposed two-story horizontal enlargement to an existing one-story restaurant that the applicant has operated since two thousand and ten. In addition, the restaurant and existing auto sales in the project area will be brought into conformance while the auto retail, excuse me, auto repair and car wash uses will continue to operate pursuant to previous B S A approvals. City planning believes that the existing R one-two zoning designation, which only supports single-family residences, is inappropriate North Boulevard, a major thoroughfare and commercial corridor. The agency believes the proposed C two-two commercial overlay map alongside the existing R one-two appropriately reflects the existing land uses within the project area. In addition, the established In addition, the establishment of the C two two commercial overlay will limit future commercial development to a low-rise scale with locally oriented commercial uses consistent with the surrounding area. The agency further notes that the providing, that by providing zoning predictability to subject properties, this provides a stronger land use rationale, land use planning rationale than the nearly century-long practice of ad hoc review of B S A applications. A CPC report reflecting this recommendation has been prepared for the commission. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Any questions? Saying none. Let's move on to Bombay Street.
Yes, so we have Bombay Street, Maguire Avenue, and Mason Boulevard. We have fifteen Memphis Avenue and six eighty-four Van Duser Street. One of my favorite street names in the city. These are all certifications and authorizations pursuant to Staten Island Special Districts. Staff believe that the findings have been met and are recommending approval of these.
Great.
Steve Fred nodding. That's great. All right, moving on to our post-hearing follow-ups, we have first, the Bruckner sites rezoning. We'll note for the commission that the applicant is working on a comprehensive response to the questions and issues raised at the public hearing, and staff will have a full post-hearing follow-up at the next review session. So if there's any further questions that the commissioners want us to address, we can take those now. Cut. Last, but certainly not least, we have Hallets North, and Teal Daly is here with a follow-up. Teal?
Good afternoon, commissioners. This presentation is the second post-hearing follow-up for the Hallets North rezoning and special permit. Next slide, please. Just starting with a brief overview of the requested actions, this is a private application by Astoria Owners LLC for a series of land use actions to facilitate approximately one million square feet of development in Astoria Community Board, Community District One of Queens. The requested land use actions include a zoning map amendment from an M one one to an R seven three C two four zoning district, a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing area option one, a waterfront special permit to waive regulations on height, setback, tower size, and maximum width of balls facing the shoreline, waterfront authorizations to modify requirements within the waterfront public access area, as well as a waterfront authorization for phase development of the waterfront access area. And finally, a city map amendment to demap the portion of Third Street between Twenty-Sixth Avenue and the East River. Next slide. The project area is indicated by the blue rectangle on this aerial image. The project area is located on the northern shore and has shoreline along the East River. Also of note is Astoria Cove, which is another large-scale development that was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, and this is located adjacent to the project area to the east. And also the N W trains can be accessed via Astoria Station and the Thirtieth Avenue Station located approximately one mile to the east of the project area. Next slide. The render on the screen shows the proposed development as described in the priest post-hearing, previous post-hearing follow-up on June twenty-seventh. And this follow-up included modifications shared around lowered base heights, as well as increased space between towers. And the render is showing an aerial view from the East River facing southeast. The proposed development would continue to have through towers connected by a base that would ultimately contain approximately one thousand three hundred forty dwelling units, three hundred thirty-five of which would be affordable per M I H option one. Also, one thousand eight hundred square feet of commercial space, approximately twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet of community facility space, five hundred twenty-five vehicle parking spaces, as well as five hundred twenty-five bicycle parking spaces, and finally, one acre of open space. And just to note, in the background of this render, in the darker gray is the proposed Astoria Cove project. Next slide. The illustration of drawing on this slide shows the proposed ground floor as certified back in March. In the illustration, north is to the right with the shoreline along the East River. The type-two vehicular and pedestrian upwind connection is located at the top of the drawing, and the waterfront public access area, as well as Tower Three, are located to the right side of the drawing, also by the water. Based on feedback through the public review process, the applicant is in the process of further modifying the project by shifting the location of the motor court and the third tower to the south. The idea is that the motor court would shift south within a range of about thirty to forty-five feet, with the intention of shortening the long vehicularized upwind connection and creating more publicly accessible area for pedestrian use by the waterfront. And Tower Three would shift south in a range of ten to fifteen feet to create more space for public use, while also providing some relief along the shoreline from the sheer tower faces of this tall tower. Next slide, please. And this diagram just shows the components of the waterfront public access area. This includes the planted type-two upwind connection that facilitates the vehicular and pedestrian traffic in blue. The supplemental public access area is located just north of the buildings in pink, as well as the shore public walkway in orange. And together, these components comprise twenty-six percent of the overall site, which is actually greater than the twenty percent area required by the waterfront public access area regulations. Next slide. Then I'll all step into environmental review and the E I S associated with this project. So chapters in the E I S that identified significant potential impacts include community facilities, open space, transportation, and construction. Next slide. So starting with elementary schools, mitigation would include applicant funding to S C A for a to-be-determined program or improvement within Community School District Thirty, Sub-District Three. And this program would be determined at the time that the impact comes online in construction. And whatever program would be decided between the applicant team and S C A to increase the capacity of the school to serve eighty-two students. I just want to note here that this project didn't have a big enough impact to warrant a brand-new school associated with this project. And so this programmatic funding really is meant to be tied to increasing capacity of an existing school. And for early childhood programs, the applicant would provide space onsite or provide funding for an offsite classroom to support twenty-seven slots for children ranging in age from infants to four-year-olds. And stepping into open space, the applicant would upgrade or replace a playground and sitting area, reconfigure existing stormwater management systems, restore existing pavement in the playground and sitting area, and install eight security lights all at the Triboro Bridge Playground B. Next slide, please. And for transportation, I'll start out with the transit impact. The applicant, D C P, and M T A discussed mitigation for an impact at the stairs to the platform at the Thirtieth Street Station for Manhattan-bound trains, and these are the N W trains. Mitigation would include a new stair, but must also include an elevator per ADA requirements for accessibility of all passengers. The applicant feels that constructing an elevator and stair is impracticable, among the several other impacts that they've agreed to mitigate. And thus, this impact is unmitigated at this point in time. And the rest of the impacts on this slide have relatively standard mitigation proposed. For the bus impact, the applicant identified the need for another bus in circulation in this on the peninsula, and this would need to be implemented by the M T A. For traffic and pedestrian impacts, mitigation would include traffic engineering improvements such as sign timing changes and relocation or removal of impediments to pedestrian flow where possible. And for noise, the applicant offers to install storm windows or alternative means of ventilation for surrounding buildings' potential impacts. Next slide. The mitigation members for measures for construction and noise are standard to alleviate traffic congestion and noise during construction. This would be by improving traffic signal changes, offering of window air conditioning units, and constructing noise barriers around the site. Next slide. And then summary, at this point, modifications to the design that I shared today will be reviewed by D C P and shared with the commission in advance of the vote on July twenty-fifth. And the final E I S is due this Thursday on July fourteenth. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks very much. Let's, let's see what questions we've got here. Okay, I don't see any questions for you, Teal. So, thank you for that. We appreciate your, your attention to this. Ryan? Do we have any other items today?
No, that, that's it for this agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought you were gonna say. So let me just thank the commissioners for their presence and also to the staff of the Department of City Planning for for all of their hard work, and we will see you all for our public hearings and votes on Wednesday morning at ten a.m. So thank you all. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you then.